Speaking of the Tyler ISD Board of Trustees, this call is over. We have the presence of the floor. The meeting has been duly called and the notice of the meeting has been posted in the time and manner required. Thanks everybody for coming out today. We'll start off with public participation. And the first speaker we have, I think we have four, but the first one is Shannon Branson.
I'm here first of all. Good morning. I want to talk to you about, about masking in our schools. I know I talked about such, but I won't talk about it anyway. A week ago, my brother-in-law died. He died, we call us, he could not get a hospital room. He was in the ER. It dragged on. He had a treatable condition. He died because he did not get treatment in time. There wasn't even an ambulance to get him from urgent care to a hospital. It is a mess in our healthcare system. You know, the best thing according to NetHealth is to be vaccinated and wear masks. We have 18,000 students in the district, I know you all know this. You know, I would estimate, the data records weren't available, but I would estimate at least half of those probably aren't eligible for vaccine yet. They're too young, they're under 12. The best thing I think that we can do is require masks for our children. Chapel Hill, Longview ISD have already done it. Various other school districts are working with it. I know Paris, Texas worked with a workaround in their dress code instead of this and that. According to the news this morning, there are 45 schools in Texas currently closed. My sister's school was closed last week. Closing schools is a huge mess, and maybe that's our best thought here. I mean, the worst-case scenario is we have staff die, we have students die. Schools in Florida had, they had 18 staff members die in Miami Day. Now that would be significant, I would think. When you talk about closing schools, you have the economic impact, the parent impact. If parents stays home again, we know what a mess that was. I really am a terrible homeschool teacher. Yeah. And you deal with that. And you deal with the kids that didn't have Wi-Fi. You remember what a nightmare that was. It was hard on everybody. Parents aren't going to work. Your entire community can suffer. This is really a community issue, and we'll get back to it. My daughter's a seventh grader at Caldwell. She's still wearing a mask. Sheila, she said, "I'm gonna wear a mask." My friend Kate has asthma. My friend Meadow has a brain tumor. Nana has rheumatoid arthritis and has immunocompromised. Aunt Susie has our special needs aunt, you know, with physical and mental disabilities that we help carry around and drive. All the things where you're worried about exposing your community. And we go back to Mark. Healthy, 54, shouldn't have been a big deal. He was planning vacation when I talked to him. Then he got pancreatitis. I wasn't even worried about him. I went, "Oh, everybody's families had that. He'll go to the hospital, he'll get treatment, he'll be back home. I'm going to laugh at him for screwing up his own vacation, and we're going to move on." Instead, we went through this mess. He left three kids behind, they're grown, he never got to be a grandpa. He has a business here in town, he has a widow. Now we're dealing with all the things that go along with that. And if we were just more careful, if we could just be inconvenienced. I hate wearing masks. I hate this hot. It makes my nose itch. All those things. Am I willing to do it to benefit the rest of my community? Absolutely. And I think we should require our kids to as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Shannon. All right. Next, we have Sarah Sass. Hi Sarah.
Hi, good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Sarah Sass. I'm a mom of a kindergartner at Caldwell. We love joining the Tyler ISD community and being a part of all that is Caldwell. I'm here because I, like many other parents in your district, are concerned about the spread of the Delta variant and the burden it's putting on our area, the healthcare facilities in particular, our fine nurses, doctors, healthcare staff, the burden that's placed on your teachers and staff who've been impacted negatively by COVID. Sorry, I'm nervous, so I brought it in now. This is my first board meeting. And frankly, the burden that's placed on all of us. And I want to thank you for your leadership and providing vaccine incentives to teachers. I think that's a really important step. Also, thank you for your leadership in the email that went out last Friday encouraging masks. And I understand we're in a critical time around the issue of mask mandates. I am grateful to Chapel Hill ISD and Longview ISD who made heart calls, and they did go ahead and issue a temporary mandate due to the serious and alarming spread of COVID. I also understand that these temporary mandates, according to their district lawyers, are perfectly legal, and we can do that while the governor's ban is in litigation. I'm here as a mom, a friend of a medical professional who has seen her fellow nurses on dialysis, and it's been really hard for her, so I'm a little emotional. And a friend of a person, frankly Shannon, who just last, you've heard her story. And I've also, as a teacher, personally witnessed, you know, my students, my friends, my extended family have a lot of negative, you know, at best disruption due to COVID, and at worst, serious loss and death. Just to give you a small example, two of my close friends are not here today to speak to you because they themselves have COVID that they believe was brought home from a child who's in Tyler ISD at two different schools, one in a middle school, one in an elementary. So I have to ask, how can Tyler ISD help and how can we do our part? I strongly believe that we should institute a temporary mask mandate, and I respectfully ask that a special board meeting be called or covered works at the next board meeting agenda. I respectfully ask that it be added to the agenda. I ask that we invite NetHealth to come and speak and just tell you how it is on the ground if you haven't, maybe you've done that already, I don't know. I ask that you do that. I know that some find it inconvenient to wear masks and that masks are not perfect in preventing COVID. There's no perfect way to prevent it, but we also know it offers an important layer of protection. And that helped us survive an impersonal school year last year, which I commend you all on. I think you did a great job. I truly believe it's a small, temporary, and time-limited thing that we can do and that can pay dividends in supporting our community, our most vulnerable, our children, and especially our healthcare workers right now, who are burning out and leaving. So I truly thank you for your dedication and service to your community, and I appreciate you for your time.
Thank you Sarah. Okay. Next, we have Almentaro Walrath. I'm so sorry to miss that.
I'm 47. My name has been slaughtered my entire life, so don't worry about it. My name is Almentaro Walrath. Thank you in advance for listening. I can't see anything. Thank you in advance for listening to what I have to say with an open heart and an open mind. My name is Almentaro Walrath, and I am a parent of a new Caldwell star. My son loves going to school each day. He looks forward to everything from eating in the cafeteria to meeting the teachers. He literally told me the other day that he wanted to meet and make friends with every single teacher at Caldwell. Goals, right? My interactions with the staff and the teachers at Caldwell all confirm to me that they are dedicated, talented, and that they love my child and all of the other students that attend. Truly, these are excellent educators and support staff who are building a vibrant community that makes us all better in appearance and in substance. So this snapshot is mirrored in the numerous other Tyler ISD schools and means that our over 100,000 strong Tyler community is daily being supported and built by this institution. We, parents of Tyler ISD kids and those who do not currently have children in school, owe a debt of gratitude to each of you who play a role in maintaining the integrity of this foundational public institution. Thank you sincerely. Risks to this bedrock institution are all our concerns. We are all linked together in this community. If my son catches COVID at his school because there is no mask requirement for teachers, staff, and students, he will at minimum be required to miss school for 10 days. Even if he does not become seriously ill, it will still mean interrupted work time for me and my wife. It will mean time spent getting tested and treating symptoms. It will mean added fear for my child's health and safety. It is likely that nearly everyone in Tyler has a connection to Tyler ISD. If you draw lines between my story and the over 18,000 students enrolled in roughly 36 campuses throughout the number of staff and teachers who in turn interact with those who work, whose work involves regular exposure to the public like doctors and nurses and bus drivers and grocery store workers. By issuing a temporary mask requirement, we can measurably increase the safety of our most vulnerable loved ones and minimize the disruption caused by this pandemic. The seven of you have the power and the authority to issue a temporary mask mandate. You are our trustees, and we have entrusted the safety of our children to your wisdom. A mask requirement will help protect our children, but since we are all linked by this public institution, it will also protect the most vulnerable among us, including people with disabilities and fragile immune systems, children too young to be vaccinated, and communities hit hard by this disease. So it is with all this in mind and more that I ask you to implement a temporary mask requirement for all those who are able to do so. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Walrath. I feel like I missed that again, I'm sorry. All right. Okay. Carolyn Davis, you are our last speaker today. Hi Ms. Davis.
Good morning. I'm President Washman, Board members, and Superintendent Crawford. The last time I addressed the school board, my focus was on two or three main things. The DOI, or the District of Innovation, and the hiring of about 100 Tyler ISD teachers who are uncertified, to which I am still opposed, versus Tyler ISD hiring retired teachers who are certified and experienced, to which I am still in favor of. I also inquired about whether two ethnic courses, African-American studies as well as Mexican-American studies needed board approval, to which I did receive an email reply from, I think, a person at Central Administration, and I thank you for that. I am a little concerned about those ethnic courses with so much talk about CRT, Critical Race Theory, which is unwarranted, so much discussion, unwarranted controversy around that, as to how those courses may be taught. Now, while I'm still concerned about each one of these today, I will focus on making masks mandatory in our schools. I sent an email to each one of you on August the 17th about this topic. However, I did not get a reply or confirmed receipt of email. So just in case some of you didn't get it, or maybe you overlooked it, I will read that email to you today. It says, "Good afternoon, Dr. Crawford. It is my prayer that the students and teachers of Tyler ISD have a successful school year, both academically and otherwise. There is a great deal of concern about the health of students with the Delta variant of the COVID virus on the rise." And again, I wrote this email August the 17th, and today, I know you're aware, the Delta virus is more so on the rise. I think it's one out of four students, if I'm not mistaken, are testing positive. Specifically, there is a concern about the wearing of masks by students and staff being optional in Tyler ISD and other East Texas school districts. I am of the belief that it is critical that the wearing of masks should be mandatory in schools. I believe this not only reduces the spread of the virus, but can also save lives. Although this goes against Governor Addus' edit, several superintendents have taken the courageous steps to mandate masks. And as one of the other speakers said, I believe that's inclusive of Longview ISD, Chapel Hill ISD, McAdoo's ISD, and there are others as well. I also believe there should be an option for students to participate in remote learning if students and their parents choose to do so. Please consider making masks mandatory and adding a remote learning option, especially for students who don't have access, 11 and under, they don't have access to the vaccine yet. In looking at some of the other board meetings, I know you are of the opinion that coming back last year face-to-face made all the difference in the world. When I studied the data, I'm not so sure that that's the case, but be that as it may, I hope you will consider my request. Thank you.
Thank you Ms. Davis. Okay, that wraps up the public participation portion of the meeting. We are moving along to a few action items, and the first one is the approval of the internal audit plan for 2021 and 2022. And I think that Ms. Coker can... Everyone knows Director of Internal Audit and Consulting Services is Ms. Coker, who is supported by the Audit Committee and Mr. Newsom. Ms. Harrison, Ms. Coker, looking forward to your presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Crawford. Good morning, everyone. I appreciate the time to be able to come up here and be able to be the speaker. There are two areas I'd like to discuss. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Newsom and Ms. Harrison for serving on the Audit Committee. I really appreciate them. The first area I wanted to discuss is annually, the Institute of Internal Auditors requires that I confirm to the board we have dependence of the Audit Department. So as the Director of Internal Audit Services, I hereby confirm the organizational independence of internal audit activity. The second one is referring to the 2021 Audit Plan for the Board for their review and approval. The Audit Committee reviewed the results of the risk assessment and risk-based audit plan with resource requirements. And resource requirements are just the hours that are actually in the audit plan that it will take to perform the audits. So, anyway, the audit plan itself is a little bit different from last year. The major differences are, the construction auditing was on last year's plan, we don't have that on this year's plan, and we're including technology audit. The Institute of Internal Auditors standards require technology audits and audits and technology governance as well. And this year, we're also moving forward and putting governance audit onto this audit plan because the construction audit activity took more time than we planned, and we also had that period of time people lovingly call "snowed it," where it took some of the audit hours out of the plan. And the other thing, this year, we're also planning to perform more campus audits in this audit plan and more follow-ups as well. So I want to take this time now to ask if the board members have any questions.
Board, anybody from the internal audit committee want to speak on this before we ask questions?
As far as speaking on it, I think Ms. Coker is one of the most efficient people I've seen in a long time. She's very particular about her times, and she itemizes all our events and activities on a regular basis. I've been very pleased being on the committee last year and this year with her activities. I think we could have done anything better to do this type of job than Ms. Coker at this point. Everything is very particular, and had any concerns doing anything that she's put in at this point.
Okay. Questions about the internal audit plan? Okay. Do you need that mean for all?
Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. Okay, so having reviewed the internal audit plan, do I have a motion on Caldwell?
Good, 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 God, I plan to begin.
Thank you. Second. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? How's that? Motion carries. Moving on to consider approval of the Head Start Program Information Report for 2020 and 2021. As part of the Head Start Calendar that we annually review, this divided year report from last school year, 2020, 2021, is bringing on our Director of Head Start is in the audience today. Any questions in regard to that, it's in your packet. If you'd like to commentary on that, she can certainly answer any questions for you if you have any more. Okay. Does the board have any questions, or has everybody reviewed and come to the board? Pierre So, do I have a motion on item B?
Move to approve the Head Start Program Information Report.
All right, thanks. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? How's that? Motion carries. Okay, for action item C here, we have considered the approvals of local policies, DEC and EIC. This is a second reading for the board that pertains to DEC, which is an adjustment per statute from this last legislative session, really focuses on leave opportunities for peace officers inside of school systems in regard to certain involvements and experiences in some unsavory situations as needed. In other words, you know, pretty, I don't even want to talk about it, tragic, tragic, if they experience something with a tragedy. So this is statutorily driven. EIC actually aligns to our regular periods of nine weeks, along with the identification of pre-AP courses and AP courses as their influence in the grade point averaging. Used to be in our local policy, there were, and statewide, there was some policies in there about also maybe weighting honors courses that were locally designed. Those have been removed. I can't off the top of my head, Mr. Jones, think of any courses we had locally that were identified as honors that received the same grade point average as in a pre-AP course. Can you think? Yeah, so anyways, it's something that was already in policy, we won't take any advantage of, but TASM went in there and struck that from policy. Okay. And if everybody has, well, I'll go ahead and, if anybody has any comments or questions on this item?
Just a final clarification. So the honor class that's offered by the district will not be counted as the same as the AP or the other.
Yeah, honors is kind of an antiquated labeling of classes. I mean, I can remember back when I was going to school, that's kind of what they called. There really was no pre-AP. We labeled them as honors, more rigorous programs. So that's kind of just held on. Those have been replaced by your pre-AP and your AP, your dual credit stuff. So that's correct. Honors courses really don't exist in our choice sheets. We may call them the honors program, but as far as the honors classes identified, we don't have those. It's either pre-AP, AP, or dual credit.
Okay, so we don't have any district that we're referring to.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve item C?
I approve item C.
Thank you, the second. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? How's that? Motion carries. We are moving on to our continuous improvement in student outcomes portion, where we have an enrollment update. Yeah, we're in the fourth week of school for the 2021-2022 school year. Prager Board Monitoring Calendar, we do have an early enrollment update here in a few meetings. I think it's the October workshop with Natasha. You'll have a class size update. That's the K through 4, 22-1 updates that we give this board. That is actually part of our DOI as well. Most speaker talked on that earlier. So we wanted to go ahead and give you some highlights in regard to this. Also attached to that is our attendance rate among the students that we do have. Right now, you can see on the very far bottom right, we're actually at 322 students this time last year. We're kissing what our enrollment was, barely underneath what our enrollment was prior to the pandemic, which was about 18,200 students. Right now, we're 18,106 students. We have recouped a lot of the younger kids, the little guys. Parents are choosing to send their kiddos back to school this time last year when there were so many unknowns. Remember, that's who we really struggled with, not to mention the fact we were about 65, 35, anywhere 70, 30, online learning, and parents opted out of not enrolling their kids because, you know, online enrolling and doing virtual school for a first grader or a kindergartner is pretty tough. So in school, we're back, we've got our students back, and then behind that, that is actually our attendance rate up to this point. We're at 92.89%. We're normally at 96.58% at this time, but understanding there is some illness out there in the community, that's probably the influence that you're seeing right now in regard to that. So I wanted to provide this opportunity to get this in front of the board, so Chelsea can have some discussions about our enrollments or anything that might pertain to the enrollments of our school system. Okay. Thank you, Dr. Crawford. Does anybody on the board have any questions about our enrollments, or percentage of attendance, or anything?
Just explaining the chart on the front page. Looking at the numbers, it appears that the middle schools and high schools did not report anything the first, at the first five weeks. Is that correct? I don't see any.
Those are by grades.
By grade.
Up top is by grade, and in the left is the school. So obviously, a high school does not serve grades, early education, pre-K, and then kindergarten 1 through 5.
Okay, that's a great one. Or embedded here.
Does this attendance include staff or just students?
No, this is just students.
So do we think the numbers have been affected by, you said individuals being out? And I was looking at the second page, looking at the numbers, the difference, and the numbers, some of the schools are much higher than some of the others, like Foxton, Jack, Owens, Woods, Hubbard, Legacy, Tallahai, and Rice. Do you think that, we know why those individuals are out, or what's affecting them?
I don't think we know why. They are higher. It could be the frequency of testing for COVID. Maybe those communities are testing more frequently in regard to that. That could be an impact. There's really no rhyme or reason why in regard to that, that I can give you right now, but you could probably take your best guess at it, just like I can.
Right. And that leads to the fact that the consideration of wearing masks, I think, that could be my concern, which I've voiced several times. And we don't know the number, we don't have any confirmation of the number of staff that's out. We have students, which is significant, from my perspective. I, from my perspective, uh, I, I think it would be important for us to consider masks and discuss that and possibly put it on the agenda, uh, for, for the discussion regarding that particular topic. And then, uh, really looking into the details associated with it, with all the implications out there. Me being a health professional for thirty-five years, of course, I strongly support masks. And, and from, from my perspective, there's no reason not to. But I think it's something that we have to discuss and talk about openly in regards to why we're doing what we do so that people know why we do what we do. So I would definitely like to see them agenda, mention that to the board president prior, uh, so that we can discuss it openly regarding this issue. There's a lot of concern from the community regarding it. You know, and that's, uh, we, we need to be as accurate as possible. Being a healthcareer, my, my motive is always, always, you always take care of the people that can't take care of themselves. And that's part of our job, the healthcare professionals, we sacrifice our lives so that we can do that. Uh, so, uh, when we talk about our kids, it's even more heart touching from my perspective. So I would like to see us talk about this in great detail, if we can, from our own sense.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Newsom. Anybody else? Any comments?
I'm not sure why people are, all the white students are out, but it is a, a concern, especially for the younger students. And just knowing several people that contacted COVID from their child being at school. I have a, a lot of individuals that I know that that has happened to as well. So, um, to discuss it or to talk about it or to, um, feel about it, let the community know that also we're not just trying to avoid it, that we are interested in our eleven and unders and those students that cannot help themselves.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Atkins. Anybody else have any comments about enrollment or anything that might impact enrollment?
I've got a question about the, uh, online and virtual options. What are we, where are we currently with that, Dr. Crawford? And is there a difference between someone who's out for illness versus someone who maybe, what are, what's going on with that right now? If you can give me a.
So speaking as a parent that has experienced this, we have remote conferencing, which is a four-hour program a day, you can get full account of attendance and along with a check-in every hour. Uh, kids jump into Canvas, you're all familiar with what Canvas was, that was our virtual learning platform. And during the ten-day quarantine, that is interesting, is interestingly enough, in my house, about eight days too long. That's how kids can jump on there, um, as far as virtual opportunities during the quarantine. Region seven, we're part of Region seven, was in-person last year, anywhere from eighty-seven to eighty-nine percent. We outperformed the state last year amongst all other regions. Tyler Isley is part of that, y'all have seen that data, it's real data, it's being talked about at T E A, not just at the podium, but about T E A in regard to what Region seven did last year about in-person learning. In-person learning is a valuable tool that we have here. Whether or not we go to a, uh, jump to a blade situation, uh, would have to be something we have to really tighten up and consider because the way that medical attestations were being written last year by doctors, um, there was not fidelity in the real reason behind it. So if we were to jump to a virtual learning platform, that would have to be really tight and considered about who is allowed in there as well. Not to mention the fact, do they qualify per, per, per state funding in regard to that? If they spend more than fifty percent in virtual learning, um, if they did, were not successful on their star exam, if they did not maintain a C average, I think those are the three big benchmarks. And I think there might be some participation, uh, actual attendance inside of that virtual program. They don't qualify for funding, you can put them on your, on your, uh, your blade or your virtual learning, but they don't qualify for funding. And I don't think that's what we're really talking about funding here, but if we talk about some of the things as far as what the state thinks should qualify kids for virtual learning, is something that I think that we would consider as well. So right now, if a child gets, um, sick, a lab confirmed test, they may have access to that remote conferencing. If it's just suspected of, of, um, that's COVID and they haven't gotten a lab confirmed test, um, we're not providing them access, I don't believe. Is that right, Rachel? Okay. So that's kind of the remote conferencing option. You can do it only up to twenty days. This thing has been in play since the early nineteen eighties when the AIDS pandemic started coming out and no one really knew how to, how to, you know, kind of combat that. So that's T E A, I believe, is when they started their remote conferencing option, along with other infectious diseases. And so Commissioner Marath actually dug down into the student county handbook, we call it the S A H, it's S A H, really dug down into the S A H and found this opportunity for school districts to be able to keep kids engaged and connected, um, when that happens. So if kids get sick, then the nurse identifies that, that individual along with the administrators on that campus and provide the information to the parent about how to access that. And I believe there's a button on Canvas, is that correct?
On our COVID tracker.
Or on the COVID tracker that allows access for that individual student to be able to get on there. Thank you.
So in the remote conferencing with Canvas, do you have access to what's happening in class or are they pre-recorded lessons or?
There's not a whole lot of live instruction going on. If a teacher does have a video or two attached inside of their Canvas, then that is, um, something that's available. Those hourly check-ins are with staff that we've identified, it's not their classroom teacher. So this is not a synchronous or asynchronous thing that's run by the classroom teacher. It's actually by staff we've identified to take care of this for us. Um, because we found last year that in some cases, in all, every case, just about having the teacher either do the synchronous or asynchronous, while we did have some rock stars, I will say that. Krista Arrington, a former Teacher of the Year here, was incredible with her, her synchronous instruction. That's not the norm, that's a lot to put on teachers.
A lot.
And, um, so we've got, we've gotten better at that because we've kind of taken that off of their back now. They are responsible for keeping their Canvas updated. Canvas is where we house all of our lesson planning, um, all of our work, et cetera. And what we're finding is, is no, probably not a hundred percent fidelity on that because there's some teachers that have been teaching for a while that may lack their filing cabinet uh, and have not transferred everything over yet to Canvas, but that's, that's the outlier, nothing more.
Okay.
The thing that we're talking about now, I think is important, I think that, that's why I wanted it to be, I know I don't stand along so we could look into a lot of the aspects that we're not talking about right now, like the legal aspect, where we put us at the district if we did this, all those ramifications. Now, I know that right now, we are short forty-six teachers that we need. So, you know, I'm looking at all this stuff and it's not, it's not adding up, it's, it's not what we need to be.
What, what forty-six teachers are you speaking?
We're needing forty-six teachers. I just got a text about that, uh, this morning, sixty, around sixty-four job openings in the district.
Those are our teachers, how many, how many teacher vacancies do we have, Roger?
Two, uh, the, 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 the waiting for opening, maybe it was clear, uh, to get.
Well, that, you know, those type things, I think.
There might be some other vacancies in regard to support staff or administrator staff. I'm not sure as far as classroom teachers, but we are not at forty-six or sixty-four.
Well, sixty, well, this comes within the district, that sixty-four job, open jobs on the following campuses are needed, teachers.
Parents, they will?
It's at teachers, it's at teachers, it doesn't say, it's teachers.
I don't know who's giving you information, but they're wrong.
The person who gave it was the.
Chief staff over here.
District administrative personnel, Micah Fallon. This is the email that was sent this morning, sort of a text or something, it's sent this morning.
So.
That, you know, whatever the case may be, sixty-four is.
I'm talking about vacancies, you're talking about people that are out.
Okay.
Is that correct?
I don't know, this is just email, we have sixty-four job openings. The following campuses need teachers. And I won't, I can read the campus, but I'd rather not.
It seems like we ought to be doing this offline, might have this one for me, y'all, I mean.
That's why you can't just go on stagnation of this, that, the other.
Well, you're, I'll just say that administrations can take a phone call anytime to get facts so that we can talk about facts and not just throw things out of the school.
I would certainly do that as well, but I think that information like this should be verified among the other, whether it's in school board meeting or whether it's in private, I think it needs to be discussed. And I think that we need to discuss the issue. If you choose not to, that's just my opinion, all on my person.
Okay. We need some subs, it sounds like. We do need some, and I appreciate them taking sub jobs. We've got some plans on the way in regard to, uh, enhance the sub opportunity, uh, in regard to that. But if you look at the dashboard, we do have some staff out, we had staff out last year, is what.
And I think that there's, there's a difference between open positions and subs, people outside, I think.
That's right, that's great, thank you. Teacher openings, we have two, is that correct, Mr. Jones? I hate to see what we had if we didn't have district innovation opportunities there because there's a teacher shortage in Smith County, in Texas, and national. The demagogues have not made education an attractive profession. And we admire the folks that have chosen this profession, uh, we honor, uh, admire what they've chosen to, to, to serve. And, uh, teaching during this time, it's active time to be an educator. I appreciate, I appreciate, I do appreciate the trust in the community. Ninety-three percent attendance rate is, in, in these times, appears to be great. Up three hundred and twenty-two students from last year is a good thing, showing me the community trusts us to send their kids to school. And, uh, thank you for the enrollment report. Um, I know it'll probably end up going up as well. I hope so, um, just one last thing, we do have our COVID tracker and we have a lot of eight thirties and eight thirty-ones and nine oh ones and nine oh twos that are going to be rolling off. Now, obviously, with everything that's out there right now, that's going to keep adding up. We know that this Delta variant is a little bit more infectious, uh, in the community. And we certainly don't want one kid to get sick, but it's going to happen. And so in saying that, I think if you look at the, at the tracker, you're going to have some kids roll off from this first wave that, I'm looking at about two-thirds now, I know Rachel's back there saying I'm probably getting them. As we speak, we're probably getting information right now, um, about folks that have been lab tests confirmed as well. There are also some others, uh, the, the other way that folks are attacking this as well, they're kind of waiting for two or three days to see if those symptoms go down and then they send them back to school. So there's a whole lot of juggling that's going on in regard to this, that, uh, chasing lightning like we're chasing, or chasing ghosts right now like we're chasing, um, i- is pretty tough, uh, in regard to that. So admiring nursing staffs, admiring teachers and our principals and what they've got going on right now. I mean, Andy Wood yesterday, they had seven classrooms of perfect attendance and they celebrated. And that's a, that's a pretty neat thing. So, um, there's some of those stories out there too, instead of just worrying about the doom and gloom the entire time, I'll say that. And I'm in defense of my staff, my, my teachers and my principals that are, that are doing great things underneath a pretty stressful environment right now.
And you are looking at that, right? I know I keep saying that every meeting, like if, if there was a large, or if there was a significant number of hospitalizations, on, on the Channel Seven news last night, what, whatever classification we're in, it's a letter number for that.
What? What age or G? G is pine woods, it's Texas, yeah.
They said we, there were two prenatal hospitalizations in the entire G.
Prenatal?
Uh, no, um, whatever, under eighteen?
That's right.
Yeah. So you're, y'all are looking at that, right?
Absolutely.
Because we're relying on you two, if there was some big number of children that were being hospitalized, you would let all of us know that?
Absolutely. I don't know what a big number is, but.
Well, any significant number, I mean.
No, but there, right now, you're right, I think there's three actually from the report that I got last night.
Okay. And that's out of like ten counties?
Out of ten counties, we do get others put here from other counties as well. So we track internally whether or not there are tolerized these students or not.
Okay.
And so I'm not comfortable giving that information out of the dice because it probably can be triangulated.
Yeah.
But if there's three that are, what do they call, it's fifteen to twenty-four, I believe, or no, it's, yeah, it's fifteen to twenty-four. Is, is what I think the num, the age bracket is. Yeah, and I can't remember what they call that, it's adolescent and something else.
We also have to remember that a number of people are not actually reporting yet and have to be documented, confirmed. Therefore, there are a number of people that, and, and some people don't want you to know that they have it. So I think that that's.
But that's not hospitalization, so it's your report.
Well, the, the whole number of hospitalizations has been higher, but this strain, the variant, but the number of deaths have been much less. So, you know, you're talking about a different strand compared to the one you dealt with last year. So that's what we're looking at, people, the more people have gotten sick, fewer people have been hospitalized and died from this list of variants. So, you know, when you talk about it, you're not just talking about people that are in the hospital, we're talking about people that's walking around and being carried. And there's no way of knowing that at this point.
Well, I think that's your, I mean, we all look at different things.
Right.
I'm concerned about pediatric hospitalizations mainly. I'm, I'm concerned if kids are going to the hospital, if they're just getting sick like all of mine, my, all of my kids have had it and only one of them barely knew it. So there's all different kind of things going on, so I think every one of us needs to, you know, decide what it is we're going to focus on. And you're entitled to focus on whatever you want. Mine is are, are children going to the hospital and are they at risk of death? And that's the biggest thing for me, but like I say, I'm not saying you're wrong or anybody else up here is, but I think we need to total pieces if, if, you know, every, you know, if everybody's recovering, I mean, we could have a, you know, five-hour discussion about the nuances of what's going on and none of us are experts. Um, so we each need to just kind of use our best judgment.
Yeah, one of the things that's out there is the people talking about the school closures. Those school closures represent three point seven five percent of total school systems in Texas. And then of the forty-five closed districts, twenty districts are under five hundred students, thirteen districts are under a thousand, and twelve districts over one thousand students, the largest is six thousand seven hundred. So we got to put that in perspective when people start talking about closing of school systems. If you've got one third grade teacher and that third grade teacher might be ill and you can't even find a classroom, which is a strategy pre-COVID, um, if you couldn't find a service, then yeah, you, you may have a ten hall or a NACIS or a Timsen close for a day or a week or so. And a lot of these people are closing for three days or five days, but COVID is supposed to be quarantined for ten? So I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out what the example is there that maybe to shut down and maybe do some cleaning, which we're doing. So I, I think you're right, we're all right, that it's a pretty pressed topic, maybe why? And we can have conversa, further conversation about this because it's, it's easy to get caught up in some of the news clippings or what folks like to come up and talk to y'all about at that podium. And what's real and what's not real and what's in perspective and context. That's the administration's point of view about whether or not we're going to close, how many cases does it take to close a school? And I've heard that one so many times that, that I get tired of it. A lot of y'all know this story, West Com, Texas, we had a swine flu pan, epidemic or pandemic, whatever it is. And, uh, we kept our schools open, running fifty percent attendance for two straight weeks. Because those other fifty percent of kids needed to come to school and wanted to come to school. So we're, we're doing the best we can to keep our schools open, let's just go and get that out there.
Dr. Crawford, do you have the percentage of kids that are on the COVID tracker based on?
What, what are we, we usually discover the, the total for employees and fit up, do you know what our kid rate is right now, Ms. Barbara?
Two percent.
Two percent?
I mean, six kids.
And then last year, we were running at a point, we weren't getting the point one of a percent, weren't getting close to it really. But now it's a little bit different because the, the, the biology behind all of this is certainly different as well. And, you know, with all the vaccines on the adults, that was one thing we were really concerned about last year. We still are concerned about it. But the vaccine is, is a factor as far as school employees go. That's why we, we brought that to y'all last, last board meeting. Because our folks are going into way different environments than a lot of other working adults are in, in these states when you go to school. So anyways, yeah, two percent there. Not really sure about what our staff rate is. Do you have that?
Sixty-four, actually, faces for staff right now.
Sixty-four confirmed cases today out of two thousand seven hundred folks. Y'all need to map on that.
You mentioned vaccine, and I think that's another thing that we have to consider if we ever talk about the masks in, uh, the level and under don't have access to that. They don't have any protection at all, from my perspective. You know, social distancing, we know is not a reality within our schools. They were not designed for that, six feet aboard. They don't even have access to the vaccination. They don't even have access to masks to protect them. We know that, that parents can encourage them to wear their masks. I know that my grandkids are being encouraged to wear masks. But like all kids, when you leave the house, they do what they kind of want to until the parent finds out. And our teachers can't even encourage them to wear their masks if it's common because we don't have a mandate, okay? And they would get probably reprimanded if they did. So from my perspective, that's why I feel so strongly about this is that those eleven and hundred, which we have eight hours a day under our supervision and our protection, and we're not, from my perspective, we're not doing anything to protect them other than relying on the parents. And some of these kids, that parents have involved in their lives, and some of them don't. So, you know, I feel like that's why so important that we consider that edge group. Twelve and over, they have an opportunity, parents have an opportunity to get vaccinated. If they didn't, that's a call. But the ones that haven't had access to it, I feel strongly that we should be doing something as an issue because we're responsible for those kids eight hours a day. And if they get it on their campus, we should put that in.
One of the parents spoke to this.
Right.
We do have a mask protocol. We were strong, we, we've changed the language of that. We strongly encourage that we highly recommend it. And we do have staff that are choosing to do so.
Right.
Even though they also have the opportunity to not do so. When I visit campuses now, I actually put a mask on because it's a little different environment, you know, in there. So.
But.
I'm just, the other thing I'm just gonna say on this is the difference between this, this time and last time was it was a community-wide strategy.
Right.
If the schools go to that, and I'll be where we all agree, if the schools go to that, then what you're saying is you're gonna put the strain on the principals and the teachers to enforce on every kid here when it's not a community acceptable strategy. You do have some defiance, but you take a little bit of that out when you're saying, not saying their kids aren't.
Right.
Wanting to be considered. What are the consequences for the defiance of that now that the governor is muddying things up?
Right.
And that the community has now seen as an acceptable strategy? And that's, that's the debate we've had inside of our administration is that if y'all were to adopt that, what is the enforcement there? And what is, what is that strain going to put on our principals and teachers?
It would be the same as we used last year. You know, right now, the teachers don't have any authority to say anything to a child regarding a mask at all. Last year, it was mandated, therefore, the teachers could say, little Johnny, you need to pull your mask up.
It was, and it was an acceptable.
Cover your mouth and your mouth.
Acceptable community-wide.
Right.
And it was actually put in the state's executive, executive order to have a mask mandate.
Right.
There, so.
The state allows individuals, communities, to set their own standards, okay? We would be considered a community at this point.
Sure.
Therefore, we could do what we, what the community desires to do at this point. That's why I said legal would be important to discuss with them, but conditions with us, man. We've seen what other districts have done, but, you know, I don't know what the legal aspect is. If we go as it is, talking about lawsuits and all this issue, it's something that we have to take everything in perspective when we make that decision. Last year, we didn't have to because it wasn't. We did, it was mandated by the government. Now it's not mandated by the government. If we do that, towards that put us at the forefront, towards that put us at the district in regards to our actions, towards the, the teachers. You know, that, that's things that we need to evaluate to make a good decision regarding that issue.
Yes, sir. It is interesting you brought up community. It was such a good scene to me to see everybody out at the Tyler High and Legacy game last Friday night. I think we probably had nine thousand, ten thousand people there. Is that about right? There was a lot, eight, nine thousand, there was a lot, a lot of people there. And as far as the community and the way they functioned, you know, I couldn't help but to notice that they prefer not to wear masks. And, you know, pretty congested, I mean, there were outdoors, but. I do have kids under the age of eleven. You know, I don't make them wear masks, and that's my choice for my kid. I do care and love my child, and I love every kid in this district. I do believe that parents, if they're concerned, should encourage it. Do what's best for your kids, is what I tell everybody. I have a hard time with mandates. I'm just gonna say it a little bit. I have a hard time with it. I'm a fan of choice, and I will always encourage people to choose what's best for their children. That's just where I stand on this issue. Anyway, unless anybody has anything else to say in terms of enrollment or anything that pertains to enrollment. Does anybody?
Yeah, I would just add that I feel like as school board members, we know we have a duty to stay informed, and I know all of you guys are. I have no doubt that you're well-informed as I am, reading everything I can every time something's put out so that we are able to make good decisions. You know, it doesn't, the, our only information doesn't come when someone comes into a school board meeting and talks to us at the podium or, you know, we have somebody come address us. So I'm confident that I'm daily gathering information to help me make a decision on what's best for this district.
Thank you, Mr. Burke, Bill.
Another thing, in regards to, since we're not doing a mandate, are there other things that you consider? You know, the possibility of, of parents that choose to keep their kids at home, make it optional, you know, to use Canvas or whatever system we set up so that they would have that option as opposed to being mandated they have to send to school. Because right now, they have to go, or they can be legally charged by not sending their kids to school. So I think that we need to look at some type of options to give the parents that safety net, so to speak, in regards to how we deal with this. I, you know, I, I'm still concerned about that group. I'm still concerned about those kids that, that are, that exposed on a daily basis and don't know how much. Being a health care, I have to do that. That's just part of my nature, that's part of me, that's who I am. I, I care about other people, and it's not just my immediate family that I care about, but the other people out there that don't know. It's not over the statistics. And, and unfortunately, it's been crowded by individuals that have a political agenda in some aspects and it makes it difficult to make a decision. And I think that we as a board need to consider all those things and the options possibly because there are people that are opposed to their kids going to school now. And it's something we can do that make it easier for them to feel comfortable about their kids getting the education, the public education. I think we should consider that. So I think that we need to look at options to make available to those individuals based on whether it be a medical experience or whatever it may be. But I think that we need to look at options. If we don't require the kid of eleven and under to come to school without a mask in a possible environment that may be infected, teachers as well. You know, I, I'm concerned about them as well. If that teaches us out, and teachers out in one classroom, and somebody has to cover for them if there's not a sub, and we have the shortage of subs, that means that somebody has to cover two classes, which is approximately four plus kids in an environment that's not safe. So there's a lot of things we need to consider as we talk about this. It's not just what we see, but we need to look at the whole picture. And I think sometimes individuals outside of that don't see it. Health is a major concern, it's always been a major concern. People don't always understand, but things have always been done to protect our kids. We emphasize, we emphasize our kids every year. It requires this mandate that we emphasize our kids before they can come to school. The things we emphasize from here now, the frequency is much less than public. And yet again, we require them to have implementation to come to school, public schools. So I'm saying that there are a number of things we need to consider when we talk about this in regards to how we're handling this situation. It is a, a new situation. And I think that we need to make sure that as a board that we're considering all those options so that we are treating everyone fairly and give them options as well. And if we have options that we can do to allow a parent to feel comfortable by keeping their kid at home and getting the education they need, maybe we should consider that.
Whatever plan we come up with will be highly restrictive, if we come up with a plan. It will be highly restrictive as opposed to last year.
Yeah.
So I just, I'll say that because we know what the failure rates look like. We know what the participation rates look like. So anyone just opting in for a, to do, to do virtual because it's there does not mean that they're going to access it and be successful with it. We know.
And we know that. That's why we came back early. It was looking horrible as far as academic, and I'm very concerned about academic.
So having, having it wide open puts us in the same predicament we were in last year. So that's, I will caution everybody on that.
Okay.
And I'll say this, they're here with us. The data does not lie. That is an enrollment sheet right there, and they've come back. We can, I almost kiss in pre-pandemic stuff. So, uh, enrollments and stuff wouldn't very professionally be the setting, but I am for these states. So that's just something I want to be very cognizant about. If we're talking about these parents don't want to send their kids there, they do have an opportunity to, to make choices.
Do they need the district, like, and go to White House or down here or, you know? We don't want that.
Not asking them to do that.
I know.
But people vote with their feet and walk with their feet, and right now, they're enrolled with us. And I don't want to see much of you leave us either. I don't. We had that happen last year, so y'all just keep your hands on it. But right now, I think people are looking at that, looking at the data, looking at how this is affecting everybody, and, and they're okay with it right now. Not everybody. And I had, I had a pastor, one of his last things that he preached before he retired recently, he said he knew the success of the Federer. He knows the secrets of success, but he knew the secret to Federer, and that was trying to please everyone all the time. And so we've got to be careful about that. Now, I actually signed up as an substitute teacher, by the way.
I have one comment on what you said.
Yes, Dr. Nation.
Everybody is talking about data, and you don't look at the data and, and this is data that they're presenting to us and everything. But in the world of education, we are so immersed in data about every single thing. Why would we be immersed in data on performance and everything else and not be as concerned about the data in our decisions about COVID and about face masks? So the data is looked at, whether it's presented by people here at the podium or however. And like Andy was saying, we are drenched with data, and we take that information in, and we make the decisions with as, as educated as we can, being on a daily basis and power. So that's for us.
I'd just like to add, I would definitely want to add, anyone to teach you. I, I do Canvas. It takes me two or three hours to get one lesson together on Canvas. So we got teachers do Canvas for virtual and do it in class. That's like two different jobs. So I definitely do not want to put more educators or principals who have had this difficult task.
I agree one hundred percent. I think our teachers performed very well last year doing dual roles. But I do think that we need to consider some options at this point since we're not doing a mandate for those eleven and under. Some options need to be considered, if there are any options within our district that we can consider other than going against the governor and doing a mandate. So if there are other options that we can look at, we need to look at options, the availability of individuals to get their education, public education, and not come to school and be able to feel safe about doing that, if there's a possibility of doing other options. That's all I'm asking. Since we're not, are not considering that effort, we need to look at options.
Duly noted. Okay, well, thank you for the enrollment update. Thank you for the discussion. We will now go into executive session for a little bit with some action to follow after that. Okay, we're back from executive session to take some action on consideration and possible action regarding the Level Three employee agreements that we have on the agenda. Do I have a motion on that particular item?
Mr. President, I move to deny Level Three agreements heard in executive session.
Okay, you have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Why, it's a ten?
We have one abstention, and all opposed. Okay, ayes have it, the motion carries. And now we will go back into the execution, the executive session.